And then business, finance, engineering.
So this is like, uh...
It's just gonna go on the slide. Yeah, so like kids are more aware of like if they wanna do.
That's really cool. Did you guys do this for like a month or something?
Uh, yeah, we just kinda did it.
Getting started, welcome to the Start the League February Caucus. Uh, we are here, uh, and, uh, happy February 4th, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. A couple of brief announcements about all of our guests. Uh, we have a special, um, budget meeting, um, our annual budget meetings are coming up. Our first will be on February 13th, here in the Forum at six o'clock. Uh, as we will continue to go through elements within our twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget, and then opportunity for all members to ask questions, and any other public interest to ask questions as well. A couple of personnel matters, uh, which is agenda coming up, which our four being will be February the 11th, here at seven o'clock. Okay, personnel, uh, unfortunately we have some reservations. We have, uh, Ashley Felicity, the condition care professional, and then, uh, we have, uh, you know, unfortunately, um, Ross, uh, who is, uh, um, who's, uh, the second is, uh, there's not a lot of things that is, uh, there's been great, uh, there's been a lot of great...
All right, uh, in last year's budget, well, this current year's budget, we, well, you gratefully approved money for brand-new band uniforms, and we said it would take quite a while to get it planned out. So, we have a sample they sent us, and we graciously have a model. This is... This is great. They look sharp and they're functional. The buttons aren't fake, they don't do anything. That way, we don't have to worry about getting them repaired from wearing out. They fasten in the back. The headgear, I feel like we're on a runway, the headgear... And, the pants are like bibs underneath, so, it'll be very functional, and I think it looks very sharp. Um, Mr. Caraher's pleased with them, and they're, now that we're pleased with this, they continued to make the actual uniform, so...
They're different in the back?
Yeah, they attach in the back, um, you see, there's a fasten, you see the seams in the back.
How do they get out?
Pairs, band buddies.
It's actually, it's, like, it's reasonable to build itself, um, but usually just help somebody out there.
I mean, they always do alright.
So, very pleased in how it turned out. They look sharp, and we can't wait to see them on the field in the fall. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
All right, I've always wanted a handheld, 'cause I could feel like a rock star now. Uh, going back into, thank you very much, Mr. Funk, thank you, Mr. Caraher, and thank you very much for, uh, coming as well, and modeling, and, uh, displaying that incredible, uh, uniform. And thanks for your hard work. There's a lot of work that went in to making sure that there's durability associated with these, that there's a lot of thought and planning that went into these, and going back and forth to make sure that the, that the pricing point, and, um, you know, that these will, will, um, last the test of time, so, thank you. Going back into, uh, personnel, um, we have the amendment of the effective retirement date, uh, for Mrs. Ballsba, which I'm excited about. Anytime I could, uh, keep Mrs. Ballsba around a little bit longer is always a great thing. So, she's amending, uh, her retirement, um, from May 27th to June 30th. So, it'll be extremely helpful, um, as we continue, and as I continue every day to, to learn from her and enjoy so much working with her. Under employment, uh, we have, uh, Jaria Adams, uh, as a building substitute, uh, day-to-day substitute teacher, um, here at, uh, our school district, primarily in the high school, so we're looking forward to Mrs. Adams, uh, joining us. Amanda Holsapple from Newport, from the position of custodian one, excited, uh, to welcome her as well. Mr. Ken Medina, um, as comptroller, he should be a familiar name. Mr. Medina helped us, uh, with some of our budget preparation a few years ago, uh, during some of the interim work, uh, that he's done. Nicole Redcross for the position of behavioral specialist, and that, uh, is a position that's, that's much needed, to be able to work, collaborate with us, and our administrators, and our teachers, um, to work on those behavioral plans with students, um, and to do, to do some professional development as well as push in, uh, to classes as well. Uh, Jacob Smith from New Bluefield as building substitute. Mr. Smith is, uh, has done a great job, uh, with us already, and we're excited, uh, to have Mr. Smith, uh, join us here at Cescuñida School District. We have some change in status, uh, Mr. Turowski from Masters thirty, Step fifteen, uh, to Masters forty-five, Step fifteen. Mr. Engel, uh, moving, uh, the same category as well. Uh, Ms. Hannah Lengel from, um, Bachelor Step five to Master Step five, and Mr. Adam Timcek, uh, Bachelor Step five to Master Step five, all per, uh, the current collective bargaining agreement. We have two leaves of absences, uh, for your consideration, is, uh, Mrs. Sarah Campbell, and Mrs. Melissa Holman, both at the elementary school. Uh, tenure, uh, tenure is obtained, uh, as moving from a temporary to professional employee, after three successful years of employment within the district, and six satisfactory evaluations. Earning tenure is, uh, Thimba Lee, from the elementary school. Substitute professional staff member, uh, Brooke Graybell will be joining us. She is a retired educator, and we're excited to have her join us. She's elementary K to six certified, and has some additional certifications as well. Substitute custodian, uh, Mrs. Joanna Lightner, uh, will be joining us on the substitute basis. And we'll look at some spring coaches, uh, for the meeting coming up on February 11th, as we finalize those, making sure that, uh, everything is updated, um, and have an updated list provided to you. And we have a, um, substitute, or, or new addition to the roar bus list, recommending Kayla Smith to be approved as a, um, a bus driver, um, that's upcoming. Going into some agenda items, going right along, uh, we do, in fact, are looking, we'll go over a little bit tonight, some highlights, just some bullet points, not all, um, you know, multiple hundred pages of the audit report, but we're looking for your consideration. Once that audit report is finalized, we'll get that there for you to see as well, as a link, uh, to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four audit, as provided, the single, uh, audit report, provided by Claysek and Associates. And we did have Mr. Anthony Gagliardi, our chief auditor, here, um, at the January meeting, going over some of those elements, um, of that preliminary audit. We're looking at, um, a couple of policies for second read, which is two seventeen graduation, and eight oh seven opening exercises. Uh, we do have a discipline committee recommendation, um, for consideration as well, uh, some updates, and, uh, possibly some dispositions of retired items. Any questions on agenda items for, at this time, for February 11th? All right, at this time, we'll do a financial update, and I'm gonna toss the mic, the hot mic, over here to my colleague to the left, Mr. Jason Brous. Let's give it up for Mr. Brous.
Yeah, I guess so. Uh, all right, so I gave you guys, uh, two, two reports here. Uh, let's look at the, uh, I guess, the shorter one first, the revenue. Uh, if you skip ahead to the, uh, revenue total in the next to last page, uh, we are at seventy-two-point-seven-four, uh, collected of our, uh, original budget, so we're a little bit ahead of the fifty-eight-point-three percent, um, as we are through the year, so, we're well-collected, uh, in a good place there. Uh, looking at the, uh, the expense report, the, the larger one, if, if you skip ahead to the last page again, uh, we are at fifty-six-point-five percent, uh, expended, uh, and again, we're fifty-eight-point-three percent of the way through the year, so we're about, you know, two percent, um, to the, to the good there so far. We do have some individual line items, as you kind of peruse through that. There are some larger individual line items. Uh, the team is working really hard at trying to, uh, align the budget with the expense. We are, you know, trying to reclassify some of the expenses to where we think they should be, um, and the, the budget might not align perfectly, but it is within the budget, um, so that's why I encourage you to look at the, you know, category totals, as opposed to the individual lines for this year, and as we go into next year, uh, we'll try to get the budget to, to better align with the, with the actuals. So, is there any questions in the meantime that we can address?
While they're looking, I thought I would comment. Behind the scenes, we were talking, um, Mr. Brous, maybe you could speak to this, but since it's so early in the month, these, it's really hard to put these numbers together to truly reflect, um, reality. I'm probably not saying that correctly. So I think the request was made, and I, I think we should honor it, to move this financial report to the actual regular board meeting, which is a little further in the month, which gives him more time to actually use real numbers. So, I think moving forward, unless someone objects, we're gonna move this financial report to the actual board meeting on the second week of the month, and if you want to speak more to that, please.
Yeah, no, that would be, uh, very helpful, because a lot of times, these caucus meetings are like the first Tuesday, and that really butts up to, tight to the month end, uh, so that will give, uh, the accounting team a little bit more time to, you know, do what you would call financial review of the prior month, so no, that would definitely help out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, just a quick little, um, unfortunately, Ms. Snyder was under the weather and not able to be here, but she did send me some CIA updates, uh, curriculum instruction and assessment. Um, the first is National School Counselors Week, which will be February the third, so here we are, we're in the week, this week, uh, to the seventh, and we'd like to recognize all of our outstanding school counselors at all their buildings. They're, they're incredible, from in academics, to, uh, social supports, to just really being that liaison, uh, to the students. They do an outstanding job, so thank you to our, uh, school counselors. We will be finishing this month, and, uh, hopefully next month, presenting a little bit and going over some overview, because it does need to sit for about twenty-eight days, and have public comment and review, which is our comprehensive plan, and we're scheduled to meet tomorrow, um, pending any weather. Upcoming curriculum updates, uh, we're looking at, we're gonna be seeking approval soon for, uh, Family and Consumer Science. That curriculum is ready, and, uh, they've done a great job, uh, to really revamp and look at that continuum, as well as business, um, here at the high school, and Algebra One is ready, uh, for your consideration and review, um, for approval. We're also, uh, at this time, and, uh, the elementary school, uh, under the leadership of Mr. Ward, and Mrs. Walsman, and Ms. Snyder, and Mrs. Lang, and the entire, um, elementary school has done a really great job of looking through math programs. Our current math program is being retired and not supported anymore by the provider, but it also gives us an opportunity to look through that curriculum, and look at a math program that we can grow and continue to grow with. And, um, it, it's reported here that we're looking next month, uh, to look at a program, do some presentations, try to get some information, maybe this month, uh, coming up in March, maybe April. We wanna make sure we do our due diligence, look at all of those aspects associated with it, and make sure we have a solid plan when we present that information, about what a program that's gonna meet all of our needs, and a program, again, that we can continue to grow with, not grow out of instantaneously. Those are some curriculum instruction and assessment updates. At this time, I'm gonna, uh, throw the microphone over to Mr. Funk. Oh, looks like he has his own microphone, and we have some outstanding students here, and I'm excited. They are certainly, uh, a great group here, a great group of all-stars, and I look forward to hearing all of the work that you've done, and I know it's, it certainly has been a lot. So, Mr. Funk, take it away, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, February, uh, you guys can make your way down, and I'll talk about the first part. February is when we get to bring you the course selection guide. I put it at your seats, and I put the bulleted item of the changes. Uh, we'll skip down to addition, past additions, but the modifications, compared to past years, there's minimal changes in the actual courses. Uh, Communication to Today's World, it was requested, instead of a ninth through twelfth, that this focuses more on tenth through twelfth, to give them the, the ninth grade year, to get acclimated to the high school, and be a little bit more mature for tenth grade. Also, Academic Biology, a few years ago, we opened it up to some, I guess, advanced academic students, coming up from eighth grade to ninth grade. We've noticed that there needs to be, uh, a couple more prerequisites, because we had some students that are doing well, and some are struggling, so we added, it did have in their Algebra and Geometry, but now we added eighth grade science, also, that they should hit a minimum eighty percent in eighth grade to take biology, yes? Yes?
None of them were. Um, can I ask what the thought process was, to have the higher grade, the prerequisite for math, and the lower one for science, given that the biology class is not math-heavy?
The, talking with the teachers, basically, they wanted the math, basically, 'cause it's, trying to think what the discussion was. Science, there can be a lot of subjectivity in the courses between the different grade levels, but math is pretty concrete, and they just chose the higher one, I mean...
I just, I would hate to see a student not be able to take biology, because they don't have as much as, sort of, math, but they're really strong science student for a class that's not math-heavy. Like, I could see it was chemistry, because there's a lot more math in chemistry, or physics, and not by...
And I'm fine changing, make it eighty and eighty, that way it's consistent across the board.
Yeah, or even eighty-five, eighty-five, or, or something, you know, I'm just...
No, that's a, we can make that change. Okay, and we can make that change. And, uh, deletion is Agriculture or Science, we've kept that in there, but have not had a teacher certified to teach it in several years, and everyone, that's not really a cert that's around very much, so we're gonna remove it. If we were to hire someone with Ag Science, we'll definitely put that course back in. And students... Whoa, whoa. And students still have the opportunity to participate with Ascending District as well. I believe our affiliation with Greenwood... Yes, and in the past, students who did wanna take an agricultural FFA path, did take classes at Greenwood, in a cooper, in agreement with them. Sorry, I'm mic'd up.
We thought the microphones come on, but actually he realized he has lapel mic on.
Going back to the top, the addition, uh, this sheet right here, recommended course of sequence, this was usually in the handout that the students receive when they selected their courses, but through just discussions with teachers and parents, that they said, "It'd be great if it was in the handbook," and this will go in the handbook, but I want to keep it, just, what should they be taking each year? While the guidance counselors talk to them about it, here it is, write down, um, these are not set in stone, this is not a club where you're locked in. I mean, it just gives you an idea of what is recommended that year, because we do, we don't lock pigeonhole students from the start. There's a lot of flexibility, but we thought this would be a great addition to the front. And now, the next part, I can actually say, I've been looking forward to the February, February caucus meeting. I mean, I don't think I've ever said that in my time up here, but I have a good group of students over here, and we had the portrait of a graduate that was presented, that was worked on, and I think it's very, a good document and resource to use, so we wanted to see how we can support our students preparing post-graduation, focusing on pathways, all right, to success in different careers. So, I thought, hey, this would be a great project-based learning activity. I said, "Mr. Shepler," and the students with you, "here's a great idea, here's a bunch of data," turned it into a project-based activity, and I waited to hand this out to you. This document is all them. That's pretty much, I'm proud of them, so, I'll turn it over to them.
You guys hear me? All right, awesome. Yeah, I'm gonna let them do most of the talking, um, they did a really good job, um, on this. Uh, I, I will give Mr. Funk some credit, um, well, not just some credit. Um, I do think it's cool, uh, even a few years ago, when he was like, "Hey, I wanna take this static course selection catalog and make this, you know, online," and then from there, he was like, "How can we make this more interactive?" Right? So if those new board members, um, eventually you'll be able to get, once this, uh, course selection catalog's updated, this will be on your iPad, you'll be able to click on it, but in there, it's interactive. You can click and open up infographics about classes, you can click and watch, um, trailers and videos that students have made about classes in the past. Um, and so it's really cool to see him continuing this, and so this year, yeah, that's what he did, he talked to, uh, a group of us, um, and I just kind of, uh, organized things, but these guys did an awesome job. So, real quick, the idea for pathways, and we created this name "Pathways to SOAR," um, was looking at career pathways within the, uh, classroom. So, students that are coming in, um, and really, not just coming in in eighth grade, but even if they're making up their mind by tenth grade, uh, starting to look at, "What should I be doing while I'm here?" So obviously, that sheet that you were handed, that's separate, that looks at those core classes, um, has those recommendations, right? But we also wanted to try to give some guidance, as far as like, um, these different things that you can use to look at interest during high school, and how that could apply to what you do in the real world. Uh, and so that's where these kind of pathways came from. So, I'm going to, um, pass this down, talk about how we did this, they'll do a good job explaining it all, and then if you have questions, suggestions, any of those things, we'd be glad to hear them. So I'm gonna hand things over to Claire Wexler, and then you guys just have to introduce the student next to you then, when you hand it off. So here's Claire.
So, we started by researching other schools and online, and came up with these five pathways. Arts and Communications, Business, Finance, and Information Technology, Engineering and Industrial Technology, Human Services, and Science and Health. We then came up with clusters under each pathway. For example, under Science and Health, there is Health Science, Agricultural, Food and Natural Resources, and so on. I will then be passing to Kaden Brandt.
So, like Mr. Shepper said, we initially wanted to incorporate this into the current course selection book that's, um, on Apple Books, and so I used pages to design the template, and created the sections that will be explained below. I worked on the design, fonts, and adding the Cescuñida brand to it, so, for example, the claw you see on every page, and the picture behind that's faded in the background. And so, I shared it with the other students here tonight, and they made their own edits and chose the colors and icons. So now I'll be passing it on to Joey Zimmerman.
Okay, so, in the first part, what we did was looked at the traits that are related to our pathways. Um, we looked at three categories, which were interest, abilities, and passions. Keeps going down, yeah, there. For example, um, if you can sing or play an instrument, that might mean you are interested in the Arts and Communication pathway, um, or if you enjoy solving problems, you may be interested in the Science, Science and Healthcare pathway. I will now be handing the mic to Carol Hawkinsmith.
Um, yeah, like Joey said, we based the first three columns on the traits, uh, and then the second, like, level of the three columns there, um, those were also based on the traits, but they were, um, we, they were created for like, three different classifications, um, and they were basically for entering, like, the workforce, um, and so the first one is the entry-level jobs that you could get with some of these classes, right off the bat, out of high school, um, and those are just for students who are, um, interested in just going right into the workforce. Um, the second, um, column there is, like, the technical and skilled, like, a little bit more, um, advanced, um, and that's like for Votec, um, and some of those are just like, um, dancers, and florists, and some other things like that. And then there's the professional column, which, um, some can require like a four-year or more college degree. Um, we just really wanted to make sure that there were options for students who, like, may not have been interested in going to college, or doing anything like that. Um, yeah, so now I'll hand the mic over to Nadeline Farhat.
All right, so for the last section, um, we took all of Cescuñida's, uh, electives, and we organized them from ninth through twelfth grade. So as you look through Band, Course, and Foreign Languages listed in ninth through twelfth, and there is some repeated electives in all of, uh, the different grades, just because we saw that best fit there, and then we also have specific, like, career classifications, that's what the bolded letters are, um, after some of the electives that we offer, and it's just, or from a student's perspective, it's a really nice and organized way to see, so you can get like a taste of what your major, or farther education could look like, uh, to see if you wanna really pursue that.
So, uh, and just kind of to recap, you guys did a really good job, uh, and what we did was, and we were just showing you that Arts and Communication one, we broke this down into those five different categories, so if you look through that handout you got then, you can see that this same format applies then, as you look at, um, Business and Information, and as you look at Human Services, and each of these kids up here worked, designed part of that, um, and so, um, like we said, the electives were, are, there are some overlap, because we've seen importance in different electives throughout, um, one of the ones that she said that we did put through, all of them were Foreign Languages, Choir, and Band, because these are things that just make you a, a more well-rounded person, so to have those and include those throughout as well. Um, some of the more advanced musical things and stuff like that, we kept in the Arts and Communications and stuff like that. So, um, these, these, these ladies, we're also missing, um, Olivia McBreen tonight, and Gary Godfrey, I gotta give them a shout-out. They did all of this, I just pestered them, uh, from time to time, and we looked at, you know, different things, they did amazing work, so, um, give them a round of applause. Do you guys have any questions? We can take any.
Could you have the ladies pass the mic down, and clearly say their first and last name, and what grades they're in?
Um, I'm Claire Wexler, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm Kaden Brandt, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I am Joey Zimmerman, and I'm in eleventh grade.
I am Joey Zimmerman, and I am in 11th grade.
I'm Carol Hawkinsmith, and I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Nadeline Farhat, and I'm also in 11th grade.
I'm Mr. Shepler, and I teach 11th grade.
Very, 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 very impressive.
So I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna speak up, and this is amazing, I think it's gonna be super helpful for kids as they're moving forward. Maybe to expand on it, would you ever think of looking at the core classes and try to give them the pathways for selection? You know, I'm thinking about the kids that might be going into Health Sciences, might want to go towards AP Bio, where the engineering student might be going Physics Catalyst, and just give them, because that way if they have that knowledge from their freshman year on, they kind of know what they're facing.
Yeah, and I know, me and Mr. Funk spoke about this, this is something we want to evolve. So we thought to lay this out this year, not let you speak on it, to start with this elective process, start to talk with the teachers in the content area going forward for some of those core classes, and see where they would align, and then move those as well into this, so kind of evolve that, absolutely.
And we also want to see this, get this out here, and then next year, add some actual worksheet components for students to sort of like do a career inventory as part of this, that the guidance counselors can work with the parents and like, oh, here, let's look at this. And just helps the families be more informed, and students hopefully have a better idea of some options as they go through school.
And we've also looked at, and we'll look at this going forward too, recommendations for, you know, should there be jobs that are up and coming that we want to add to these lists of things, or are there ones that, we looked at just lots of, tons of jobs out there, so we tried to pick a, you know, array of them. And the girls, and Gary and them did a good job doing that, but that's always something that we're gonna continue to try to look at and revise, so.
They did, go ahead. You guys did an amazing job, very proud of them.
Absolutely, one more round of applause for sure. An incredible amount of work, details and research, being able to apply not just careers, but the level, you know, throughout for those careers. Taking a really a deep dive in the course catalog, was there any takeaways that you have, or anything that kind of shocked you by any of the information that you were researching? Because that's, this is incredible amount of time and effort and energies put into this.
So I created the Human Services page, and as I was going through and adding all of the jobs, I actually didn't realize how many jobs were classified like as human service jobs, and there were so many to choose from, and I just thought it was a great variety, and that students could be really informed by like looking at all of these.
Thank you.
And before you leave, I believe you were recently nominated for an Apollo Award.
Yes, I was.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have another question, did you guys find, when you did that, that there were certain career paths that we either didn't offer enough in terms of elective offerings, or were we not weighted evenly amongst those across that?
We definitely did, I'm trying to think, if we looked at it right now, there was, look at this, we talked about this, because I remember one of you guys emailing and being like, well, we originally were gonna do a wide array of electives and really do like an overlap, and the kids actually talked to Mr. Funk and said, hey, if we start to muddy all of these together, it doesn't do what it's supposed to do, which is to kind of give guidance. So we started to really narrow down which ones went. But I am trying to think of which of these was tough, and honestly, there was, there was, there certainly was one, and I don't remember which one it is right now, where it did seem like we had less of them being connected, but I'm trying to look at that right now. And I can't see it off the top of my head. It may have, yeah, I don't, I don't remember, if it was Human Services, or if it was, but again, it also depends on what you focused in on, right? So like, for the engineering and tech, you know, as far as like engineering and things like that for elective, it's tough. But when you started to look at things like manufacturing and stuff like that, we have a lot of different, you know, tech ed classes and things like that that apply to it. And so, not necessarily maybe the whole category, but like those clusters that we called them within categories, some of those, we struggled to find, find different ones, but.
Certainly a usable document, and one I wish, when I was back in high school, wondering why I was in certain classes. And this really helps to kind of align that thought process, when you're thinking that end in mind. Especially in eighth grade, when you do those, those career plans you have to do, and those career agendas, and, you know, it's in eighth grade, but now you can kind of put some of those pieces together, and you can move about the different pathways, you know, as you kind of find out what you're passionate about, and what you want to continue to learn more about. Under Human Services pathway, can we add Superintendent on there? I think that's a, that's a really good one, I'm just teasing. And social worker, yeah, but Superintendent for sure, that'd be good.
Awesome job.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do I have to use this? I did have one comment, it's probably more of a demeaning Mrs. Brassi question comment. I did have one comment, just looking at the handbook real quickly, on the gifted section, where it says, any student designated as gifted is to become involved with the gifted program, probably should say, any student designated as gifted and in need of specially-designed instruction. Not all students gifted need the gifted program, so that would be, yes.
Alright, well, we will go ahead and move along here a little bit. Great job for our students, great job building that, great job researching and designing those career pathways, so thank you very much, Mr. Funk, for that leadership, and giving that students really that, that opportunity. And they took the ball and certainly rolled with it, and it's a, it's a really great and useful document that will continue to grow and emerge. And in and of itself as a career artifact, as the students use that and work through that. Alright, we will transition now into a little bit of an MEP report. So we've had our, our building, our engineering study with Pinoni, and they've came and did some site evaluations for us, talked a little bit about their overview, and now I'd like to take a couple of moments and just do an overview of this document that you have. So in front of you here is the entire existing building envelope in mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, that's MEP, Systems Evaluation, that was produced by RLPS and Barton Associates in conjunction with Pinoni, who oversaw this product, and oversaw this entire research document that's provided. I'm not going to go over certainly, and all of these sections, but really provide some highlights and some overviews this evening, and then reference a couple of sections and ask for some next steps. So this study was in all three buildings, it was in the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. It focused on what we would call those, those building envelopes. So an envelope contains the walls, the roofs, the foundation doors, windows, vents, also the electrical systems, the plumbing, HVAC systems as well for those buildings. So the study results, it uses system in a rating scale, the lower the score, the greater the need, as you look through this, and you'll see there's some highlighted sections, some annotations, some notations throughout it, but they utilized a regular construction scale, and one being of need, where nine would be of the lower need. So one comment I did want to stress, was a comment that they made throughout every one of their narratives at each building. And the comment was, overall, these buildings are solid and well-maintained, and I think that's, that's a huge attribute to our maintenance teams and our facilities teams, and our custodians, who work tirelessly and, and around the clock to make sure that they are. And it's, it's a really a large job, when you think of three very large buildings that get used, and they should get used, by not just our students, but by the community on a regular basis. So they've done a great job, and this is in no way, shape, and form anything, but the fact that our buildings are well-maintained, they are solid, but there's some needs, just like anything else, and just like our own homes, as you go through, there's some things that we, that just, like myself, get old over time, that need, that need some upgrading. Looking at some summary items, just to highlight some, some things throughout. At the elementary school, just going through, there's some highlights in terms of roofs and roof treatments that need to occur. Some bathroom mixing valves that were noted in there, those are just valves as well, when it looks at the hot water, cold water mixing. Transportation flow, there's some things that we can do in terms of transportation flow that are not a total redesign of the entire traffic pattern. Middle school, roof treatment, some bathroom fixtures, some heat recovery and chiller is not operational. There's a multi-stack unit that has not been operational, was not necessarily properly installed, to my knowledge, and causes some trip issues associated with that, so that has not been utilized as well for a long period of time. Air-cooled, an air-cooled chiller, it was installed in 2012, and to my knowledge, they have about a fifteen to seventeen to twenty-year life, depending on, on those, those systems. Some hallway flooring at the middle school, as well as ceiling and lighting, was, was made noted in this study. And in the middle school, domestic water pipe insulation is original to 1992, and will need some upgrades as well, based on this. So I'm gonna pause for a moment, and see if there's any questions to those items. Now, this report certainly is something to take a look at, and then we can go back through, and, and, you know, you get a chance to kind of take that and review that a little bit later on, because this is the first time that you get a chance to see that.
Is the highlighting on this, was this color coded in either, will you be able to make it available to us?
Yeah, I can send that electronically, that way you'll see the pictures in color, as well as the color coding, I just didn't make color copies.
I actually like having the printed copy too, but if we could see.
Yep, I can send that electronically through email. Yeah, there'll be red, which is unsatisfactory, the light blue somewhat, two is, yellow is neutral, and then gray, and the green. Colors are difficult shades to read in that. And then on page forty, at the back, there's a summary of priority rating, that does a better job than the color coding. I think that summarizes it in a little bit more of a fashion. So I believe that starts on page forty, and it also gives a pricing structure associated with some of those construction upgrades. And that's just a pricing utilization of a construction model, probably some software they'll put in, based on the size of the building, some of the needs, and it comes up with some estimates. Some summary at the high school, again, solid buildings, but roof repair. When I, when I say roof repair, there's an asterisk I put by every one of these, because I believe firmly that, before we go any further with some of our roof treatments, that we need to do a deeper study, and that deeper study needs to occur with a thermal imaging of the roofs, as well as a potential roof core sample being taken. When we do thermal imaging, we'll be able to see how much the wetness and the heat comes out of that, to determine if there are soft spots that the insulation needs to be repaired, which means that's a little more of a removal, and a little bit more of a roof project than just simply coating over top.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my thought on that is, are we talking roof repair, or are we talking roof replacement? You know, in the long run.
Yeah, I think it would really depend on how many sections have already been treated, and of those treated sections, how much of that has damage to the insulation that's wet underneath it, and that will determine, for the sake of this study, they estimated an eighty-twenty, which is kind of a construction practice that they use, meaning eighty percent is a repair and removal of the insulation, and twenty percent is a recoding. But that will only be done through, after thermal imaging, as well as some roof scans and samples.
Well, I think we spend a lot of money every year coating the roof, or putting whatever it is on the roof. So if, if we replace the roof, we wouldn't have to be continually spending that money to continually coat the roof, you know what I mean? Unless we would need to coat a new roof every year, which wouldn't make sense.
No, there's a, there's a life expectancy to anything, and even coating it sometimes at that time, the coating is a less expensive option, there's no question about that, and it prolongs the life of them. But it really depends on how much, as we said, that moisture has gotten into some of that insulation. And there could be sections that are good, and they could be treated, and there are some sections that may need to be completely repaired, removed, and, and, you know, and upgraded, with a, with a kind of a combination of the two of those. And there are some sections that might not need anything at all, because of some of the work we've already done with previous ESSR's money in certain sections, especially at the middle school there, that are relatively new and have already been recoded, and have already had the thermal imaging scans associated with those projects prior. So that was a, really a hundred thousand foot level of this multi-page report, a very complex, very detailed report. I think they did a pretty good job of going over certain elements, and they, they speak to a lot of elements involving HVAC, certain elements that can be combined in larger-scale HVAC projects.
Do you know how, how they came up with their coding, like, did five people give a rating on it, and they averaged them? Like on the numbers, where they have roof exterior walls, because they have like a one point eight, a one point three eight. I was just wondering, do you know how they, they arrived at those numbers?
I know when they walked through, they had a team of about six or seven people, I think, that were with them, and they took a lot of notes and a lot of pictures, and from those notes and pictures, they took those back. This looks like a, a pretty traditional rating system that they use, that's a construction-based rating system.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just wondering how they got to the number, because the number looks like it's an average. Like I said, like, did they, did six people individually rate a different, you know, part of the envelope? And then they just combined them all together, or, I was just curious if you knew how they.
So I think they had a multitude of different experts in those particular areas that would look at that, and then they, I think, I don't think it was a fully a team rating scale, where it was like, all nine of us looked at the same thing and determined it. I think there was one or two experts per area that looked at it and determined and rated it, yeah. I can, I can get a full report from.
I was just wondering how, like, not arbitrary, but subjective it was, if it was, well, it seems like a weird number, to have one point three eight, you know, as opposed to one, one and a half, two, you know what I mean? Like, it just seems like it's an average of something. It would almost make me feel better if they had, say, four individuals that were evaluating one thing, and then they averaged that together to get an idea of whether it's just one person's view of it, or if it was a team view of it, you know what I mean? It may not make a big difference in terms of where it lands, but I'm almost thinking, like, when we do, when we do your evaluation, like we, or anybody's evaluation, you know, we grade the whole thing, and it's not just one person giving it, it's, and then we average stuff, so you get a better, a better evaluation, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I can certainly go back and ask that question, as to how they came up with the rating scale within that system that they use.
Not, not the rating scale, how they arrived at the number. The rating scale, like you said, is probably industry standard, a standard scale, how did they get to the rating itself?
Yep, I can absolutely ask them. So if you do turn your attention to page forty to forty-two of the study packet, you, you will see some, what we did ask our team to do is to take those individuals and this full report, and then come up with some priority ranking, if you will, based on their professional engineering qualifications, what they believed in terms of rank order, some of these items would be. And again, that, this is just kind of their, their review of it. We certainly have certain elements, and I know we've already had an internal discussion about certain elements too, that maybe are definitely higher ranking items here, that we see that are, we live in on a, on a regular, on a daily basis, that we want to address in a little bit of a different order. But you'll see these, and again, these are just cost estimates that we had, because that really does help us also plan, rather than just kind of us throwing a number together, based on our own research. This is what the construction quote-unquote looks like, in terms of some of the models that they use to predict those construction costs.
These are numbered one through ten. If these are numbered one through 10, number one meaning the highest priority due first or number 10 meaning the highest priority due first?
I believe number one is the highest priority due first in their estimates. So some things I would, I would ask at this point, this is, you know, again, a lot of information, I would ask you to take a look at some of this information. I'd like to come back in March and have a little bit more of a discussion on this, on this element in this packet. That way it gives you a little bit more time to, to look and review this. I would also ask your consideration to allow myself and our, and, and our administrative team to take a look at some of these priority items and to take a look at some of these other items that we see are additional needs and put together what we consider to be kind of a packet of items that we would like to present to you, that we would like to begin that discussion and deeper planning to get those actionable items done and taken care of. So putting the end in mind with that, I'd like to, to possibly look at in April or May to go out and, and to procure Panoni Engineering to help. They've been a really good partner thus far, to look at that and to help go out for what would be called either an RFP or an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, to see what we can do to try to group some of these projects together and look at that volume that we can possibly do, which could be so, you know, as, as much as maybe one or two items, could be three items or it could be several based upon the potential for what could be called a guaranteed energy savings plan, which therefore, what those, what that means is some of the return savings, projected savings could be used to offset some of the cost and the length of what those projects are. Really what I look at it as, is a financing mechanism and a way to get some, some value add associated with it as well as some energy ratings and savings in the long term, which is necessary and needed when we look at certain windows and HVAC systems, lighting, lighting upgrades, controls, roofs, those are all important when it comes to energy and energy savings. So if that's, if, if you as a collective board are okay with that, we'll get to work on some of those items, we'll get to work on some of that presentation, we'll share that back and see where your next steps would like to be in March, caucus.
Is everyone all right with that?
This is an example. This is the example of some additional work that they could do for us if we wanted to continue, working with them on some of this planning and educational programming and what some of the systems they use and the rating or the acronyms that they use to help facilitate those meetings.
I, I did have one question. As part of this process with Panoni, are we going to be discussing revision of any current structures like discussing, you know, the elementary school and how the drop-off lane and the bus lanes intersect or looking at maybe repurposing the high school auxiliary gym and doing something perhaps different with the auditorium to make it more, you know, to have changing rooms, some of the things we've discussed along the line? Is that part of what Panoni is going to be doing, looking at our existing facilities in each building and making any suggestions or recommendations for modifications, changes or modernizing?
So they certainly could. That involves another additional step with them. This is looking specifically at the building envelope and the mechanical, electrical and plumbing. So part of that scopeless study was, was not to look at the redesigning or the, the architectural side of repurposing certain spaces. We certainly could get involved in that with them if we, if you as a collective board so choose and wanted to, but this is certainly looking at some of those mechanical structures at this particular time.
I know, I know we talked, especially with Crabtree, about repurposing the interior of our buildings to make it more, more instructional friendly spaces. So I, I don't know exactly what that looks like in all the other buildings. I'm thinking the high school, there were several things we talked about, but I think that is something we wanted to address at some point was the interior of the building as far as, you know, the making, upgrading our facilities. So if it's not Panoni, then should, I, I think we still want to go in that direction. So how would we do that?
Well, I think the first thing is we need to honestly, as a collective group, decide if this is something we, we want to go and do in terms of the mechanical, electrical and plumbing and building envelope needs. Because if we looked at some of the assessment and some of the cost here, that's, this is a pretty, pretty hefty lift. And then I think the next step in phase two would be to look at, do we want to go ahead and, and study those, those current spaces? Whether that be we direct them to look at those spaces specifically? And that might be the best thing to do is for us to take a look at space A, B, C and D collectively as a group, go visit those spaces and see, are these the spaces we want them to study rather than saying, here's the entire buildings we want you to take a look at? Because I think that would really be a little bit more pinpointed than it would if we say, here's the blank slate, tell us what you would do with this building. I think if we pinpoint, here's the auxiliary gym or here's the auditorium or here's a room we would like to transition or here's a couple of pinch points. We, we don't have access to the stage from, from anywhere but the side doors during, during presentations and productions. I think those are, those are the elements you're talking about, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, I still, I still have a couple more questions. Some of the things on here are like replacing clocks with, what's, what, I forget what it's called.
Yeah, they, they mentioned master clocks on there. That is not, that's a nice, that goes through their evaluation system.
That's what I was wanting, yeah.
It is not of need.
All right, that's, some of these things just seem like that's a nice thing to have, but is it required? So some, some of these things, I'm sure you guys will discuss that before you come back to us, like even, you know, even some of the fire suppression stuff or whatever, like it just seemed like, okay, we don't have a sprinkler everywhere, do we have to install sprinklers everywhere or, or whatever? So...
That is, that is correct. That is correct. They, they mentioned those items, those items, you know, in accordance, if, if it would be a retrofitted building or what you would do, certain percentage of buildings require, if you start to modify a certain percentage of buildings, what certain percentages require that to be then fully sprinkled? What does that look like? But no, you know, at that particular point, there's, there's not a, a full appetite for those. I think we need to look at some of the systems and system structures, some of the plumbing, some of the things unfortunately that I look at as a homeowner and I say, I don't really want to put my money in those because I don't see them. I don't see the, the ORI, ROI on those, but we will see ROI on those from an energy perspective and, and, you know, a short-term energy savings. Will we be able to balance our energy usage from that? Of course not, but anything helps to make those buildings a little bit more efficient. One example that needs to be studied is the back wall here in the LGI. If you just look in the back, you'll see some of the perforation, you'll see some of the, just the discoloration that's coming down the wall. That needs to be, that's a hand excavation that needs to occur in the back end of the building to determine if there's a crushed drain in there or not. And if there isn't, we need to kind of put in like an active French drain type of system, deter that water away from the building, putting some stone in, putting some geotech membrane against the back of the wall and making sure that that water doesn't protrude into this LGI as it has during heavy rainfalls. As the water comes down, we want to divert it away from the potter of this building where it seems to be sitting. We need to maintain some of the exteriors of this building as well. This building is built on FS or drive, the drive-in system. It's a good system and it could have a life expectancy, but we need to treat it. It is something that requires a little bit of TLC. The enemy of drive-in is water and any holes and any protrusion gets that water into the styrofoam and will decay it really, really quickly. So what they're recommending as the drive-in, you'll see as you leave the building, is really located towards the ground. They want to come in and cut that at eight inches to the ground, put a sealer on it to keep the water coming up from ground level into the back part of that drive-in system. Seal that drive-in right now and then recoat that. That's something that's, that's very necessary to keep that life of that system intact. So those are just a few examples and we spent many days with them going around and Scott's been incredible, working with them, talking with them, showing them, providing all the detailed and, you know, records and being very open to all those conversations and asking a tremendous amount of questions. And JT Grappensberger, we, we couldn't have been happier to have somebody who knows our buildings, knows our community and been here with us advocating for us as well. All right, so a team has some homework to do and we look forward to that homework to, to share some of those next steps in March with you.
If, if possible, and it may not be, if we could get that homework maybe electronically before the meeting, so we have a chance to look over it ahead of time, that might be helpful. Unless you, unless you think us having it ahead of time is going to generate more, more questions than having it explained to us, you know?
So are you saying, well, first, just so I understand that, are you, you're saying to get what we're recommending as an administrative team to you ahead of time?
Yeah.
We can absolutely do that. We'll do our best to, to try to work on that.
I think it might be helpful and seeing something for the first time in a meeting.
Sure. All right, we will move on to, actually going to bat out of order a little bit and stay here with a little overview of our audit. So we'll, we'll tackle a little bit of that audit. You'll see another handout available to you. So what Mr. Browson and myself have done is take all of those multiple pages of the audit and try to put those down into what I would like, which is a kind of a, an executive summary. So the, all the audits need to be board approved and we're looking for that finalization of that audit to occur on February 11th. The 2024 expenses versus revenue, we saw a negative $86,350 is the latest number that was provided to us from Anthony Gagliardi, meaning we'll need to use $86,350 of fund balance for the 2324 school year in order to be able to offset the, the expenses from that current year. That's definitely a positive based on what we were projecting going into that particular year. The fund balance, when we look at the fund balance and you see that in the total report that you'll be reviewing, seems extremely high. That's because we had to account and place in fund balance that $15 million small bank note that was issued in 2024 as part of the Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Building Project that's ongoing right now. We made our first payment, that second payment will be coming after bid openings and after the procurement and those bid openings are, are approved. So that will come and then there's about, as a result of that, 13.6 roughly funds after that that are available for projects, such as some of those projects that we just discussed through this MEP and other projects as you deem as a board appropriate for the school district. My, yes, go ahead. That is correct. Yes, I will. The next is we need to commit. We have to do that annually and committing fund balance commitments through board action. We would like to recommend to you at our March, March meeting, or we can even do it in the February board meeting, that's certainly up to you. But we need to keep in our self-central trust, that is a commitment that we need to make as membership of the, of the healthcare trust that we're a part of, and that's $3,718,022. There's $9 million we'd like to reserve under PISER. So before I go into these commitments, understand that with board action, you can uncommit anything at any time that you would like to. So you could say, I'd like to uncommit $2 million and place it to be here. I'd like to commit $1 million and place it into these categories. These categories are placeholders for you as the board and they really are designed to offset future costs. When we look at the, the Pennsylvania State Educators Retirement System, affectionately known as PISERS, we're about 37.42% that we need to contribute to every member of PISERS. That rate is going to continue to go up and our contribution rate needs to continue to go up and that, this reserve helps to offset some of those additional costs. Again, these are just fund account commitments that you can unprocure at any time. What we don't want to have is a really a large balance of unassigned. You just don't want to do, you want to have assignments that are already designated within these categories. The next is $2 million for cyber charter. Unfortunately, those continue to rise and rise and rise. Really interesting report that came out and I'm looking forward to sharing that publicly once I validate some of that information, but it's astronomical, some of the expenses that are occurring right now. In particular, a report that was done by, I believe it's Education Voters and talks a little bit about one of the cyber charters and some of the expenses that are really, let's just say during our budget review meetings, people would be shocked because you won't find that type of spending in our, in our budget at all. $1,137,297 for retirement or sick payout. So based on collective bargaining agreements in Act 93, when, when individuals retire, we and they can have a sick payout that goes into a 403B as well as retirement incentives that are currently in there. That would leave 3.2 million for unassignment for a total general fund balance of $19,053,319. These are just our recommendations. You can move and play with those numbers however you would like. The only one I would ask that stays pretty, pretty current would be that 3.7 for healthcare. We did.
We did?
Yes. The fund balance is just a, a long-term commitment and kind of like a, a savings account within it. So it's in our, our budget because we budget for those expenses. And as we budget for those expenses, if we don't meet the revenue, we would use fund balance to offset that revenue. And these are just commitments that show that, to me, it shows that our cyber charter costs are continued to rise and we need to preserve some of the funding for those additional expenses that occur. This is not, this is, I mean, it can be used and you could apply that at any point during the course of it by, by board action.
So are we still going to be listing as an expenditure in our budget, $2 million for cyber charter?
That is correct. Yes, that's well said. In, in essence, if we continue with the budget plan for '25, '26, we are right now with expenses versus revenue, $2.56 million negative. If that's the case, fund balance would have to pick that up. So these categories of fund balance would pick that up. Some of that category could certainly be cyber charter, some of that category could certainly be PISERS, or that category could be unassigned.
Do we know what the fund balance was last year?
It was, if you added $86,350 to that number would give us our fund balance. That $15 million small bank note is not in here, right? Yes. It, it gets reported as revenue, correct? These are, this... These fund balance accounts are designated into investment accounts that are earning interest. That is correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how our fund balance continues to grow. No, I know that. Correct, but I'm just wondering, it seems like it's growing and I guess, and we're not putting money in. So if, if, if there's money being put in there because of investment income, then that's the answer. If that's correct, then that's, then that's the answer.
Well, there certainly is investment income and there is investments right now and the investment market is, is relatively good. And there are some of the, these accounts are wrapped up into guaranteed assurance accounts, but I, I don't necessarily see that rising to that higher level. But yes, some of it, a lot of it is what we projected to utilize... But yes, some of it, a lot of it is what we projected to utilize as fund balance. We came in a lot less than what does, that, that experience has been.
I'm just, Phil will remember this, I'm, I'm just going back to the days when we had like nine million and we're told in three years we will have zero money and we will be broke and now we have nineteen million dollars in reserves.
Yeah, I don't remember having nineteen million.
Yeah, it's the most I've ever, remember us ever having and I'm just curious as to...
I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was, I don't know.
Yeah, I just don't know how.
I was around seventeen, but I thought...
I mean, it's a good problem to have, I guess, but it's hard to get people to understand you, you can't balance a budget on reserves because this goes away and most of your budget...
She just made me think about this, that might be what it was. Because last year we came pretty close to breaking even two, I think, or...
Yes.
We didn't spend the three million that we planned on.
Correct.
So if it was fifteen and we add three and the two we didn't spend this year...
But we didn't add it.
We didn't add it.
We just didn't take out.
Yeah, but the numbers you're talking about, it was taken out of.
I'm not sure.
Because it was in the, it was in the budget to be pushed.
It wouldn't be taken out, it wouldn't be taken out till you did, till you overspent on it.
I'm not sure, but it's a, it's a good problem to have, but it's a difficult problem sometimes to, you know, explain to community because things like increasing electricity, increasing transportation, increasing salaries, that is something that has to be picked up annually. You can't pay that on, you know, on the fund balance because it goes away. So I understand that, but I think we're getting a little bit close to having too much, dangerously too much money in a fund balance, assigned or unassigned. I don't know what that looks like, but maybe we should think about at some point, consider, you know, some of these projects we're talking about, using some of this fund balance to pay for it. Because even though, to answer your question, Lee, and I didn't really want to get into this, with the whole cyber school thing, but even the PISers thing, we originally started putting money in a PISers account because PISers had been relatively flat. Then it kind of skyrocketed and now we're like at thirty-seven. So we put all that money in there to be like, we need to have this extra money in there because PISers keeps going up and up, going up, you know. But right now, PISers is kind of leveling off. So the amount, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but the amount of money, or Dr. Fox, the amount of money that, that, you know, PISers is going to charge us each year is, is going to level off as opposed to, it was going up like a lot, like ten percent, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten percent a year. Now that's kind of leveled off. So the reality of us having nine million dollars in there to counteract the increase in PISers, it's, it's legally where we kind of have to put it somewhere because we can't have a large unassigned fund balance, but we're probably not going to ever need nine million dollars in PISers or two hundred thousand dollars in cyber school costs. But you have to assign it somewhere. So if this year we are two million dollars short, we can go in here and say, that two million dollars was because of cyber school, we're taking it out of here to pay for our deficit, but you can only do that for so long. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, yes, we can only use it for so long.
I'm a little worried about the size of that fund balance when we just borrowed fifteen million. I, I'm just, I'm just not, I just am feeling a little ill of ease about that.
Well, certainly the borrowing of the, of the fifteen million was for the, the, our commitment to Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center, that one point three eight plus million dollars that needed to be sent. We also wanted to keep, as it was, it was discussed, to keep that run rate of that debt mill inside of the current budget. So that two point two million dollars as a, as a regular run rate to, to consider that. Because think of the fifteen, the thirteen point six million dollars of projects you may need to be able to accomplish, really, when we looked at this study, where it's really not going to be an increase in the budgetary contributions moving forward. Taking thirteen point six would, would unbelievably almost deplete the current fund balance that's needed for a lot of other aspects as we continue to move forward. We will verify these numbers to make sure and look, because again, when we see a full audit report of sixty-six pages, it gets extremely complicated. We'll validate those numbers with Mr. Gagliardi, our, our, our chief auditor, to make sure that those, those numbers align with anything that is, is within his full draft report. And we'll make sure before there's any commitments that we present to you, that these commitments are relative to what he, he approves and validates those numbers.
It's a good place, it's a good place to be in. I just am...
It's a good place to be in regardless, but at the same time, there's still expenses that, that are going to occur and our job is not to necessarily use fund balance, in my opinion, to continue to balance a budget.
Correct.
But isn't there like some of these, like the healthcare, the PISers and the retirement, while it's all fund balance, aren't they separated in the sense that what it's needed to be able to move things and access things as opposed to the cyber charter and the unassigned? If I recall how it was explained before is that while they're both technically in a fund balance, they're kind of in two separate categories within the fund balance and how you access them and how they're, how they're labeled and what needs to come of that. So while they're listed all here as one, really what we have access to and the steps needed to access them are different. Am I remembering that correctly?
So you can access these funds at any point you really want to?
Can I just say, I do believe that's how that was explained to you in the past, but I believe it was explained to us incorrectly.
Okay.
So please go ahead.
That's okay. I, I, it's my understanding that you, as a board, can authorize what commitments you want to make. You could say, I want all of the fund balance into this category. The only category that I believe that we have to, based on our bylaws and our participation, is the self-central trust and that is, we have to keep X amount of premiums and risk share available as part of our membership to that. But those other categories, you could put them anywhere you wanted to and you can buy board action, the majority of board action on that. You can remove those at any time by the majority of board action. These commitments are designated based on rising expended projected needs that may occur that unfortunately, when you look at cyber charter, we balance for that number or, I'm sorry, we, we budget for that number, but that could be ten students or, or an experience that's extremely negative that we don't have any control of whatsoever.
Can I, can I just, I'm, I'm going to try to simplify this the way I understand it. I might be wrong, but let's assume that my wife and I have a, a savings account and we have money in there. And on my spreadsheet, there, some of that money is stored our next new car and some of that money is toward, we're going to buy new furniture someday and some of that money is toward, you know, we're going to get a swimming pool, you know? And then my wife comes home, she's like, but I would really, really like this. We have the money for that, but no, we were saving up for a new car. She's like, I will get a used car, but I want this instead. So I could take that money out of my savings and get her what she wants and we die to the fact that whatever, that money for a new car is gone. Am I kind of right? Is that kind of what this is like?
Yes.
So I just want to be clear though, like when we're looking at for this coming budget, a deficit of two point one, I'm not sure whether you said two point six or...
Yeah.
Whatever it is, that is already including whatever the budget is for cyber charter. There will already be a line item in there for an expenditure of two point two five million dollars.
That is correct. That is correct.
So the only time we'd be dipping into the two million would be if the cyber charter costs were two point five million.
That's correct.
And we had to go into it by two hundred and forty thousand.
That's correct.
Okay. Now just, I just never remembered there being...
I think it was one million commitment that we had prior that we established.
Okay.
So you'll get, you'll get back to us on, at some point and, and whatever, when we start budget or whatever, this is what our fund, fund balance, within the budget meeting will be due time to do, this is what our fund balance was. And we could do, I've seen you do it like a five-year running, this was the fund balance, just something, something like that, just, this number just seems a little high.
Yeah, we will definitely confirm that. But setting those commitments are, are an action that is required and an action that you can, you can discuss and say, hey, that, these are great categories, but I don't like any of them. We, as a board, want the following categories. We had a category before, prior, that was new debt service. But since we have new debt service, I didn't think it was appropriate to continue with that, but you could.
And is there a reason why the healthcare and the retirement sick pay is such a non-rounded number?
No, we're just trying to get to that number of the total that we thought was the total fund balance based upon that draft audit report and trying to get close to that number. Yeah. But we'll confirm those and make sure you have those, those numbers moving forward, whether it be the thirteenth coming up or the eleventh at the, at the board meeting. So you'll have those ahead of time. And the last bullet point is just some material weaknesses that we continue to work through. Those material weaknesses identified as making sure the processes, procedures, enhanced modification of certain end of, end of the month, end of the year closeouts, that we're building processes and we're building those procedures in place. And I've been extremely happy with the work of, of Mr. Browse. He's certainly one of the, the hardest working individuals I've sincerely had the pleasure of working alongside and I, I can openly and honestly say that. So there's things in place and, and thank you for your consideration of the controller. We believe that will help a lot to free up Mr. Browse to be able to do some of this work as well. And to also, when we look at, at compliance, there's a tremendous amount of grants. Every grant has a, has a, has a quarterly report. Every grant has closeouts. Every grant has reports that need to be filed and having that controller as kind of that fiscal compliance officer will really help to ensure that those things get done and get done on time so they don't turn into these, these elements here as well. And then monitoring the cafeterias and the cafeteria balances, that's a whole system in and of itself. It's incredible, the amount of paperwork that goes inside of the reporting when it comes to both the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Department of Food Service and the USDA as well. So we will get back, we'll confirm this with Mr. Gagliardi and get back on those fund balance commitments. All right. And last but surely not least, a great segue into February caucus budget overview number three. I will go through this and I mean no disrespect, I'll go through this relatively quickly because not much has changed from January to this point. We continue to work, we continue to work on it, we continue to look, we continue to remove some things, we continue to have internal discussions, we continue to modify, but not much has changed currently at this particular point. We'll get into the heart and soul, if you will, or the details at the February thirteenth first budget meeting. It's a Valentine's Day special. Some budget focus, again, our job is to make sure that our budget is financially responsible, but yet we can still deliver those promises of our curriculum instruction and assessment. Budget considerations, we continue and, and I won't go into full detail on the whole cyber charter school payments, but I was sending information out based upon some of those. It was really shocking, some of the details of that report. Special education, under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, when that act was first formulated, my understanding that it was to be fully funded, I believe the closest it's ever came was in the thirty percents, plus or minus, but it, it is a responsibility we have. It's a responsibility that we take very, very strongly. It is our responsibility to grow students, it's our responsibility to make sure that they're in the program, that they have the procedures, they have the technology, they have the assistance they need to be able to grow and learn. Utilities and salary and benefits. Budget timeline, we're still on the timeline at this particular point. Anticipated new budget items, nothing has changed here at this particular point. We continue to ensure that those elements are placed within the budget. We want to make sure that you have those elements in terms of the anticipated new budget items. Some overview of the budget expenses at this point, it continues to be around forty million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. It is the operating budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is about a three point nine percent increase from last year. When we look at overall inflationary averages, it's about four point one percent as based on the CPI, which is the consumer price index. So we're, we're a little bit below inflationary pressures associated at the time of this report. Overview of projected revenue, we are anticipating and I did, we did build within this budget the continued increase that we received this year with special education, the increase we received this year with basic ed subsidy and the increase we received this year with the ready-to-learn block grant. That could be taken away. There's some uncertainties when it comes to certain programs and that could be taken away. The governor had his budget addressed today and it was very friendly towards education. But again, those are not guarantees until it's signed and dotted, but we, we continue to make sure, what we were told by the organizations that support us is to continue to budget as you were last year and those increases, to continue to put those in, don't add additional, but keep them, and that's what we've done. We did include in here the Act One Adjusted Index Tax Increase of five point five percent and we are recommending to you in this budget, our job is to recommend things to you as a collective board and we're recommending that Act One Adjusted Index of five point five percent. Still with that, the projected deficit at this point is two point five six eight four oh six. Again, this is an old kind of screenshot from a, from a, a report, but I think it's still extremely valuable even today when it looks at some budgetary pressures that you as a collective board reported, I believe to a PSBA state of the, state of the state report that was issued. And this was the last year's issuance of this report, but I think it still speaks true to a lot of things as we continue. Some historic real estate tax millage and I could, we can send this out. This kind of just shows historically some millage and some millage increase, the, the kind of the up and down that occurred. And remember, anytime one county, the other county, because we are in what's called that state tax equalization bureau, we are a multi-tax, or a multi-county taxing district, we have two counties, we have both Dauphin and we have Perry County. And those two play and what happens with the, the assessed values in one cause the assessed values in another, which also increases or decreases millage. This is projected for twenty-five, twenty-six and you can see throughout the historical review from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and these were directly from some of the state reports that we had issued. The multi-county considerations with STAB, we talk about, talk about that time and time again, but that is really, it's a very complex system and it is one that millage rates are subject to change regardless of any tax increase. So some people may say, oh my gosh, my taxes increased. No, it's just based upon the assessed values and how that plays in and how that assessed value plays into that, that baseline method. So it's that rebalancing that occurs every year. And so we're, we're sensitive to both the assessed value and the market values that get provided to us from both Perry and Dauphin counties and there's always going to be a change based on market value increases. And as one change increases, the other changes as well. So it could be a negative or a positive change based upon those numbers. So our next steps, again, we provided for flatline Commonwealth subsidy. And when I say flatline, it was those increases that were provided to us in late July of last year are included in here again. The cost code, the full detailed budget, a lot of work was spent into those, into those spreadsheets that has been sent to you. Please continue to look at that, post any of the questions that you may have there. We'll go over that starting on February the thirteenth at six o'clock. Any questions thus far on anything that presented at this time? I told you I, I promised to be quick on that and I hope I delivered. Thank you. I think that includes our presentations for this evening. Are there any public comments at this time? And we'll see if there's any electronic comments before we adjourn. There are no comments at this time. Thank you very much for all your time at this caucus meeting.